Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Chicago Board of Education Finance and Audit Committee meeting. Today is July 24th, 2019. We are holding this meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. I am Miguel Del Valle. On behalf of my fellow board members, thank you for coming today. The order of today's meeting will include financial update, audit update, public participation, and adjournment. Madam Secretary, please state for the record the notice procedure for this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Notice of the meeting was posted on Monday, July 22nd, 2019, at least 48 hours before this meeting at boardroom, principal office, 42 West Madison Lobby, and on cpsboe.org.
The Finance and Audit Committee meeting on Wednesday, July 24th, 2019, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the room.
Thank you, Mr. President. Member Rome?
Here.
Thank you. Member Melendez?
Here.
Vice President Riverly?
Here.
Member Todd Breland?
Present.
Member Truss?
Here.
Member Sotelo?
Here.
And President Del Valle?
Here.
We have seven members present. There is a quorum, and I would also like to recognize Dr. Janice Jackson, our CEO, and Joseph Moriarty, our General Counsel, and Chief McDade, our Chief Education Officer. Thank you.
Very good. Let's begin with the Finance and Audit presentation. Walter Stock, David Paul, and Angelica Jacob will be presenting.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for your attention on this. I'd like to start off today and talk a little bit about our cash and our TANS that are outstanding. So what we have in this first slide here is a chart of our net cash position from fiscal year 14 to 19. The solid gray thick line is a zero position, and what we're trying to illustrate here is that back in the beginning of fiscal year 14, we had a billion-dollar cash position. But lack of revenue increases to keep pace with expenditures, including escalating pension payments eroded the position over time. And we started to see a net negative territory at the end of fiscal year 14, and over the next few years, it gradually grew worst until fiscal year 18, when we started to see an improvement as a result of the new state funding formula and the pension tax levy that we were able to institute. Both these were a result of state legislature approvals, and they greatly helped our cash position. But you can see that we're still net negative cash, and for the end of fiscal year 19, we expect that we will end with a net negative cash position of negative $115 million. And so in terms of what this means, it's that based on having short-term loans, which are called our TANS, Tax Anticipation Notes, a $450 million against our cash in the bank balance of $335 million, we get the negative net $115 million figure. And I wanted to point out that that's really not the end of the story because the net negative cash position is projected to grow slightly worse in July and actually also in August, when we have $694 million in short-term TANS outstanding. And that's basically at the period where we're closing out our second installment of property tax receipts that are used to repay the TANS, and we have even a smaller cash balance. So I think the other important thing to point out here besides the intense net negative cash position is that from an accounting standpoint, we will have a positive fund balance, and that's an improvement over fiscal year 16 and 17, when we had actually negative fund balances in our accounting records. Fiscal year 18, we were able to make that positive. It will be positive again for fiscal year 19, but we still have this ominous net negative cash position, which is really the reality that we face and that we try to balance as we're managing operations and day-to-day payments. And that's really what the TANS help us do. So there's a lot more work for us to do to get into full positive territory. We've been there before. We're hopeful that we can do that, but it will take some additional financial stewardship and potentially some additional revenues for us as well. This is a short, well, complicated, I guess, overview of our borrowing program for the current TANS term. So we just completed draws, and we're in the process of starting to repay. We're in the second installment grid out there. We receive our property taxes in two major times of the year. We currently, like I said, we don't have high enough cash balances outside of those times to sustain operations, so we borrow with TANS in the interim. We authorized $1.25 billion in TANS last year. The August meeting, we would like to be back and request the same authorization. The amount of TANS, I think it's important to understand that the amount of TANS that we borrow is limited. There's not an unlimited nature to that. We are basically able to only borrow 80% of the taxes for educational purposes. So currently, we're below that threshold, but in the years past, when the situation was a little bit more dire, we were right up against that. So we were almost tapped out of actually additional short-term borrowing to sustain operations. So hopefully, the trend of improvement will continue on for us. We had 11 dates that we strategically completed the borrowings on the TANS this year. That's what's basically laid out in that chart. So again, all the, I don't know if I said this, but all the first installment borrowings have been repaid, and we're now in the process of repaying the second installment, and we expect that they would be repaid in mid-August. So if I could switch gears a little bit here, I wanted to talk about one of the items that's up for consideration at the board meeting later today, which is seeking approval of a bond resolution for the sale of refunding bonds. So we're doing this transaction to achieve savings for CPS. The background on the transaction is as follows. We have about $432 million in two variable rate issues outstanding. Over the past two or three fiscal years, we've refinanced as many of seven of those issues into fixed-rate bonds. So these 2008 and AB bonds are the only variable-rate bonds that are outstanding, and we would like to refinance them into fixed-rate bonds. So variable-rate bonds are susceptible to payment changes as short-term interest rates move around. They're generally not considered an excellent way to borrow for somebody that's in our credit situation. They're more of a legacy issue. When our credit situation was slightly better, we entered into these obligations, so eliminating them right now would be a positive financial outcome for us. The refunding won't increase the amount of debt that we have outstanding. We're selling new bonds, and with those proceeds, we're paying off the old bonds, much like you refinance your home mortgage. We're refinancing the bonds into a new vehicle. These are general obligation alternate revenue source bonds. They're payable from alternate revenues that the district receives from EBF, which is evidence-based funding formula. That was our general state aid that was renamed with the new funding formula and the legislation that was passed. They're also payable from personal property replacement tax. You may not realize, but the CPS gets a share of corporate income tax from the state of Illinois, so we've pledged a portion of that for some of our debt that's outstanding. And we also have an intergovernmental agreement. It's a legacy intergovernmental agreement with the city of Chicago back from 1997, and we use some of that to pay debt service. So we really have a lot of sources of revenue on the table to be able to repay these bonds back. It's been working quite well for us, and we're going to kind of continue that with the structure. It's really no different. They also have a backup property tax levy. I think it's important for you to understand that most of our general obligation bonds have a backup property tax levy, and to the extent that these revenues come in, we abate that property tax levy every year. And that property tax levy gives us greater market acceptance for our bonds with investors. They like to see that. So there's really hardly any changes in this structure, except that it's going to save us money, and it's going to be a fixed rate versus a variable. Here's a graphic of what is going on with this payment. And these payments look a little erratic, but you have to take it into context. I have a slide in the next page or so. It fits in with our 37 different series of bonds structures, so you don't really see this jump in the payments. But the bars are what the payments look like. The blue and the yellow, the red is supposed to be the proposed savings, the new structure as it will be laid out very similar. And the yellow bar is really kind of the savings that we will experience in the first early years. That's what we're really trying to do. So we're trying to have as much impact as we can in fiscal year 20 and subsequent fiscal years. We think that we'll be able to save $10 to $15 million in the first year and probably in the $5 to $10 million range for those subsequent years. We think overall, the savings could be $35 to $40 million. That's a present value figure for us, so that's a finance way of looking at this, that the value of the savings on kind of the time that we close the transaction, it'd be that great. And that's somewhere in the 8% to 9% range of savings, so that's a very high savings percentage for us. We think that the average interest rate on these bonds would be, we haven't sold the bonds yet, so I'm estimating this, but it would be somewhere in the 3.5% to 4% range. More than likely, it's probably going to be less than 3.5%. We've seen interest rates actually being quite cooperative with us. The Fed is talking about cutting interest rates additionally throughout the course of the rest of the year. That's having a positive effect on the bond market as well. I think the last thing is that we're looking for this resolution to be approved later today, and then we would be getting ready to sell the bonds through the month of August. And when the budget is released, we will be releasing information on that in concert with the offering of the bonds and getting out to the public markets and selling the issue, so that we would be able to close the transaction on or by September 1st. I think the other thing that's important to mention on this transaction is that what's driving it is that we have a major investor in these bonds, and they've decided to leave the U.S. market, and they're liquidating their portfolio. So they've approached us, and based on where the current market situation is at, we were able to buy those bonds at a discount. So we're still negotiating that, so I can't disclose exactly what the discount is, but it will enhance the transaction. And that's primarily how we're getting the majority of the savings, is that we're able to take those bonds off the table at, you know, whether it be 90 cents on the dollar, and sell less bonds in the future and have a lower interest rate as well. Here is a, just a graphic, if I wanted to show you what our overall long-term debt service portfolio looks like. So like I said on that prior slide, it isn't quite so erratic, but it does kind of gradually go up over the years, and then it declines later out. We have $8.4 billion in long-term debt. $8 billion is fixed, and approximately 400 is variable. It's just rounding there, but we have 432, but I didn't quite get into that detail. 7.5 of the 8.4 are these alternate bonds, just like the bonds that we're selling, and 880 million of the bonds are a dedicated capital improvement tax bond. That's another type of bond that we were able to start selling recently. That's payable through a property tax levy. But everything is represented there in the chart. The blue, which is the majority, is the EBF or the state aid that is used to repay the debt. That's the lion's share of how we repay our debt. There's also represented there the personal property tax, personal property income tax. There is also the intergovernmental agreement, and there is also some subsidy that we receive from the federal government. So closing out here, I wanted to just take a minute and refresh on our bond ratings. So this is a chart representing the matrix of all of our bond ratings. We have four rating agencies that look at our credit. We have Standard &amp; Poor's, Moody's, Fitch, and Kroll. They're both for our GO bonds and our CIT bonds. Fitch and Kroll are the only organizations that rate our CIT bonds. And again, the thicker bar in the middle is investment grade, and I think what we're unfortunately trying to point out here is that a majority of our bonds are still junk-rated, and they're below investment grade. Only the CIT has an above-investment-grade rating, and that currently is something that may change. We may see change in the near future. We're having a financial disruption in the marketplace right now as a result of Puerto Rico and the bankruptcy things that are going on there, and we established that credit in a capacity where we tried to insulate it from bankruptcy, but because of Puerto Rico and clawbacks and the way that investors are able to get paid or not able to get paid, and the court is all still working that out, they're putting much scrutiny on these types of transactions. So the city is currently in the same mix of this. They have established a sales tax credit that's supposed to be bankruptcy-remote, and that may be downgraded, and as a result, we may be downgraded as well. Fitch has also established certain criteria that said that any kind of bankruptcy-remote bond can only be a certain threshold away from your other general obligation credit, and that's putting much pressure on this as well. But we're going to keep up the battle. We're going to keep fighting with the rating agencies. As we go to market with this new transaction, we'll be reaching out to all the rating agencies, trying to tell them about all the good things that we're doing with our financial situation. But much of this is in their hands because they're independent agencies that place their blessing basically on our financial situation. But I think the one positive thing that's there is you can see that in the blue, those were previous lows, and we're up off the lows. So, you know, with this positive fund balance and better negative cash that we were able to see last year, we were able to get some rating upgrades. So like I said, we'll continue to do that. The way that we actually will be able to sustain more rating upgrades, if I can go back full circle here, is actually to have less TANS outstanding or no TANS outstanding. So that's what they would really like to see, and then they will probably lift us up to investment grade. I don't know if you have any questions, but that's the extent of my presentation. Thank you.
Well, we'll go into the audit presentation, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Good morning. Just a quick, want to provide a quick update on the annual external audit. The first slide here is kind of a look back at the last five years, kind of showing the audit findings that we've had over the last five years. As you can see, the past two years, 2017 and 2018, we had no audit findings either on the financial audit or the single audit, which is the audit of our federal programs that they rotate and look at. As far as this year goes, our auditors, our external auditors are Baker Tilly. This is their third year that they have been performing the audit. They began their field work in May this year. During this time, May and June, they're doing some of their preliminary work. They're reviewing our internal controls. They're looking, they're testing payroll and accounts payable-type transactions for control testing. They're doing fraud interviews. They're doing school visits, which are similar to some of the visits that our own internal audit department does. It says there on the second point, that Baker Tilly will be issuing a planning communication letter. I received that from them yesterday, and that will be forwarded on to you all. That's required communication under auditing standards. It's kind of a template-type letter, but it kind of lays out kind of the scope of the audit, what their responsibilities are, what your responsibilities are, their auditing standards, and they're available to meet with you upon request. They'll begin kind of the bulk of their field work in September. They'll be here September, October, November, December, testing transactions, looking at all of our significant account balances, looking at our federal programs. They'll be testing five federal programs this year, which is a large number, so it'll be an intense audit. And then the result of that is the issuance of our CAFER, our financial report, which is our public document that we file with the bond rating agencies and present on our website, and that will either be done in December or January. And there's a timeline down there below of kind of the major accounting-type transactions there, but we won't go into those. So a brief update, we're in the early stages of the audit. Things will really start kicking off here in September, like I said, and be on the lookout for that letter of required communications. Thank you.
Good morning, President Del Valle and members of the board. My name is Angie Jacob, and I am the Director of Internal Audit. I'll be providing you with an update of our school audits during fiscal year 19, as well as our initiatives for fiscal year 20, and finally, our project plan for the upcoming school year. During fiscal year 19, our team completed a total of 97 school audits, and this accomplished our goal of reviewing every high school within the past three years and every elementary school within the past six years. This included 30 principal transition reviews, which are upon new principal requests. Historically, our audits have been primarily focused on finance and operations, but beginning in FY19, we were able to expand this scope to include a student safety focus and school climate focus. So this included reviewing areas such as incident reporting procedures, AED defibrillators, APB pens at the schools, and aquatic safety, to name a few. We continue to follow up on the audits that we complete with the respective school action owners, and we confirm the completion of their management action plans that are in response to the recommendations included in our audit reports. Our school audit team approaches each audit with customer service in mind and strives to be a helpful resource to school support staff. We have several initiatives underway for the school year 20 to address common audit findings as part of our school audits. The first initiative that I wanted to highlight was the School Administration and Operations Knowledge Center site, which internal audit assisted in developing. The Knowledge Center houses training videos, guidance materials, standard templates that the school uses in their everyday transactions. And we collaborated with several different groups, such as payroll, finance, to ensure that our materials were up to date and we were providing the materials to the clerks. We also conducted clerk-focused groups to inform the content of this site. Another ongoing initiative that we have is to further develop and enhance the audit scope by continuing to collaborate with other stakeholders. For example, beginning this school year, our full scopes will also include testing compliance of our anti-bullying policy and procedure, as well as reviewing the school's oversight of volunteers at the school. In an effort to correct the common audit findings that are identified by our audits, we continue to collaborate with the school support center, other departments, network chiefs, and chief of schools. As part of our recommendations, we'll begin including school support center training dates that clerks and business managers are to complete as part of our recommendation of our audit report. As we follow up with the completion of the management action plan, we'll also confirm that these trainings have been attended and completed. As our team is out on the field at several different schools each year, we're developing stakeholder reporting for departments including safety and security, facilities, records retention, and physical education. The reports will include both testing attributes and different information that we gather for data collection purposes, and they're meant to provide departments with timely school-level information. Next, I'll provide an overview of our audit plan, which is made up of three areas. The first is special projects, which was a result of the enterprise risk assessment, where we saw an opportunity to further assist other departments as a consultative resource. The second is performing audits that provide uniform coverage across both school level and central office level. Our audits are prioritized based on an ongoing assessment of risk across the district, as well as board or management requests. Finally, as we continue to embed risk management in our day-to-day activities, it's important that we continue having ongoing discussions with different departments across the district to identify new emerging or changing risks. Our project plan for school year 20 was informed primarily through the enterprise risk assessment that was completed and presented on in December of 2018, as well as ongoing discussions with key stakeholders regarding risk management. Our plan is made up of special projects, school audits, and central office audits. For special projects, we're completing a project in payroll to develop a dashboard reporting tool and continuous monitoring metrics. For school audits, we estimate that we'll be able to complete an additional 100 school-level audits that will include both PTRs or principal transition reviews and full scope reviews. Our approach to selecting these schools this upcoming year will be both a risk-based approach and last audited history. And we're also working on developing data analytics to get coverage over 100% of district-run schools in financial areas. We'll then be able to follow up on any outliers that are identified by the data. We'll be assisting the Office of Innovation and Incubation in performing attendance counts at all ALOP schools or alternative learning opportunities programs. And finally, for central office, in an effort to get coverage over several key functional areas across the district, we're looking to complete reviews in the following areas. Travel and travel expense reimbursement, we're finalizing an analysis of travel accounts and assessments of our policies and procedures. Student safety and sports and PE consist of reviewing our CPS policies regarding student safety while they participate in these activities. In the area of talent, our review will be focused on evaluating our offboarding and onboarding procedures of employees. For charter governance, this review will not only focus on the financial aspect, but overall governance and contract compliance of our charter schools. For the community schools initiative, this will be to assess the alignment with the program goals. And finally, given the recent transition to our new student information system, Aspen, we included a review over school data quality metrics to review system data for completeness and accuracy. As we work through our project plan for the year, there are times where we may need to address emerging risks. Our audit plan is dynamic, where additional projects may be added throughout the year, and we'll reprioritize to make sure that we can address these projects accordingly. And before I conclude, I just wanted to recognize my team for their hard work during this past school year. They're an extremely dedicated group of individuals that work really hard each day to protect CPS mission. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your work. Excellent. We are now going to open it up for questions from board members.
I had a question for Mr. Stock. You pointed out that back in 2013, the net cash position was positive. I just wanted to clarify that even at that point, CPS had significant long-term debt.
Yes, that's absolutely true. I mean, if you were to look at our long-term debt position back in fiscal year 13, I mean, it was well over $5 billion. It might have been closer to $6 billion. I can get you the exact number and let you know where that is. So we have taken on slightly more debt since that time. We've continued to pay off other debt, but, you know, debt is a means to make capital improvements across the district. I think you're starting to be aware of, we have a significant backlog of those.
Absolutely. And as you mentioned, the aspiration is to get back to a fully positive, not just fund balance, but net cash balance?
Yes.
Even as we do that, CPS will still be carrying long-term debt, and your job and your team's job is just to manage that effectively. It's not going away.
Absolutely. I mean, if you look at the chart I put up there with the overall graphic of the debt, I mean, we borrow money over the life of the capital projects and usefulness, so a lot of times, we're taking on debt that has a 30-year length on it because we're building a school that has a 50-year useful life. So our debt goes out extensively over, you know, a 30-plus-year period.
Got it. Thank you.
How much do we still have after we do the refunding to eliminate the variable rate debt or part of it? How much do we still have left?
Well, I think there will maybe be a push on the debt. So if we had $8.4 billion of debt prior to the refunding, and we're not necessarily taking on any more debt, it will still be, you know, we're selling new bonds in relatively the same amount to pay off the old bonds, maybe a little bit less, so maybe we push it to 8.3, you know, 7 or something, but it'd be very, very close to 8.4 as well.
No, but how much of, after that, how much of our existing debt is still variable?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't understand. Yeah. There will be no more variable rate debt, except for the short-term borrowings that we do.
Short-term, but no long-term?
No more long-term.
Okay.
Yes, yes. So this is a really good.
And that's a big step.
That's a big step for us. I mean, years ago, we had nine of these issues, and, you know, the interest rates were not favorable to us. We also had swaps outstanding against them. We eliminated all of the swaps. Now we've eliminated all the variable rate debt, so our portfolio is much more solid and, you know, even though we may not like the fact that the payments go up, we actually understand what the payments will be.
And I think your comments were very interesting regarding Puerto Rico. Some people think that it's far away, it doesn't affect us, but what's happening in Puerto Rico is affecting us.
Yeah.
Directly.
Absolutely. Unfortunately, it is.
And people need to pay attention to that.
Yes.
So thank you for that. On the audit, the internal audits, when we have findings, how long is it before we get back to do another audit? And then what happens in between audits in terms of remediation to address the findings?
Sure. So when we complete our audit, the school has a week where they come back with their management action plan or their response as to how they're going to remediate the findings, and then as well as an implementation date of when they'll have that completed. So right now, our team is following up on those dates when they are beginning to become due, or right when they are due, we follow up with the school to confirm that they have had the chance and the opportunity to implement those changes. Oftentimes, what we've heard as we conduct these follow-ups is that they need some additional guidance, and our team will go out and do like a one-day visit to help guide them through some of those recommendations. The other thing that we're doing is that with the data analytics, we'll be able to review that information more timely, since we're not able to go back to the school for a second time to the same school year due to capacity. a second time, to the same school year due to capacity. But if we do get coverage over the data analytics, we are able to see a more timely review of what different activities are going on at the school.
Good. Are there any other questions?
I have a question also for internal audits. So you mentioned for the charter governance that you're, one of the things you're looking at is compliance with contracts, and I was curious as to why you're not also doing that with the ALOP contracts, particularly because they're newer contracts and they've had to implement some new reforms.
Yeah, the ALOP, that was a specific request from the Office of Innovation and Incubation to assist them with the attendance counts, and this is important because they're, the payments or disbursements that we make to these programs are dependent on the enrollment of the school. So in order to be able to have updated data in terms of what is in the books and what we see from our observation that aligns, that's why we're conducting these attendance counts prior to those disbursements, to better inform that decision. We haven't considered or talked about like performing a more deep-level review, but we can have those discussions to assess the risk there, and then we can determine if we add that as well as a review.
I just also wanted to add, over the past four years, we've made significant improvements to the management of ALOP contracts. The one you just mentioned, most notably about the attendance, but also reducing the amount of funding that they have. So if you look at the budgets year over year, they've been reduced to be more aligned with what we think is an appropriate funding model for the programs. We also have several controls in place to make sure that they are expending the money as directed. And so as Angie pointed out in her presentation, there are a lot of things we have to manage, and so it's much more of a capacity issue. But if you're looking at how we have conducted oversight of the charters versus the ALOPs, I would say in the past four years, they've had much more oversight and more changes than the charters, which is why they've been prioritized in the audit plan for SY20. If in fact, we think that there's a reason why we need to go deeper after this new RFP, which is also a tighter contract, we will entertain that, but I think the plan as presented today really prioritizes the areas that we think the district has vulnerabilities, and we want to make sure with the limited capacity, we focus on those areas.
Yeah, speaking of the charters, like when they, like external funds that they may raise for specific programs for those specific schools, I mean, is that part of your scope in terms of looking at like when they raise money outside of, let's say, what they receive from the district?
Yeah, and for each audit, we'll definitely assess the risk prior to determining our final scope. So we haven't begun our pre-planning discussions yet, but we will start kicking those off beginning in early August. And then we like, we assess it top to bottom, right? So we want to understand all of the ins and outs of the whole program, and then we'll determine based on risk, what will be included in our scope. So upon our review, that could very well likely be part of our scope, but we don't have that determined at this point.
I have a question about the anti-bullying procedure monitoring that you're beginning in the next school year. So can you give me a little bit more of details about what exactly that will add to the current monitoring?
Yep. So in terms of what we've seen in incident reporting and how schools are addressing bullying, it's just while we have student, or while we have staff out at the school levels, we thought that in collaboration with the Office of Social Emotional Learning, it would be important to be able to identify if schools are following the process correctly. So there, per our policy, there are several different forms, different offices that need to be notified, and them taking the steps that are outlined, such as notification to parents and conducting the investigation. So we just want to take a sample of that while we're at the schools and talk to principals about what their process is, and that could better inform if we need to go back and provide more detailed training as to giving them more support as to how to follow this policy.
So this is a process that is done in close cooperation with the social emotional learning office?
Correct, yes. Yes.
Well, there's a follow-up, Mr. President, about the bullying policy. It gets concerned I had was like with reporting, because my understanding is that if a parent has an issue, they just send an email to a specific email address?
I believe on the policy, there is an email address there, but that's what we want to understand. What are the different processes and protocols that are being followed across the district? Because what we would hope is that it's a consistent approach, but we might find that they're taking different approaches, and that's what we want to be able to target so that we can provide additional resources or training to address the issue.
Yeah, because it may be concerning if it's just dealt with at, let's say, the school level and the network chief or even central office, seems like they should get some type of notification so that way, you know, with your department, you may see some trends happening.
Right, yeah. And that's what we're trying to get to. So like just in terms of them knowing what the process is and having the resources and knowing who to contact or who to escalate these issues to when they arise at their school.
And these, the parents, I mean, you're talking about the staff or the parents?
We're going to be reviewing compliance at the staff level, at the school level. So like if they sent out that notification to the parents, that would be part of it, and that should be in their records as well.
And the FY20 projected plan, you have listed also a review of community school programs to assess alignment with initiative goals. By goals, you mean the goals that we've established CPS has established for community schools that include transform and maintain selected public schools to become centers of their communities, foster individual and economic well-being, counteract the effects of a range of negative factors that contribute to students' lack of opportunities, engage parents and community. I'm particularly interested in the last one. How would you, given the variation that's out there? We've got three different models, they've got different funding sources, they offer different things. How would you go about assessing that?
Yeah, I think it's really understanding whether the program's alignment and what the program is offering to the community aligns with those initiatives.
But in a broad sense, right? You're not going to...
Correct. And then I think it's important that you mention the funding, so whether the funds that are being allocated to those programs are being used with fidelity and for the purposes of what the program stands for.
So it's more of a financial audit than it is a programmatic audit?
Yeah. Yes. All of the programs, the two that you mentioned before, Twenty-First Century and, I can't remember the other one, outside of Sustainable Community Schools, all have a separate evaluation process and additional oversight from the federal government and compliance. The Sustainable Community Schools program does not, and because of the amount of the expenditure, the district thinks that we should be good stewards of the public dollars that we're expending, and we want to make sure if we are making a ten-million-dollar investment in community-based programs, that they are in fact serving the community. So it is a funding audit.
Yes. So it is a funding audit.
It's mainly a funding audit.
But I also see an opportunity to deal with the programmatic issue.
Yeah, later today.
And we'll be talking about this later, so we won't get into it, but I just wanted to put that out there for you. Okay? Good. Thank you. Any other questions?
I do have a couple. So I don't know if they're going to be appropriate for here, or they're going to be appropriate when you actually ask for the refunding approval. So I'll start with a simple one, the external audit findings. So congratulations, 2017, 2018, zero findings. You did mention that Baker Tilly has been engaged from 2017, 18, and 19, right? Who was the prior firm?
RSM, previously McGladrey.
Is there a difference in approach? It just baffles me that we go from 2019, 14, to zero all of a sudden, and there's a change in firm. So what happened?
I think the change in leadership, if you also line it up, CPS had a revolving door of leadership during those times that preceded that. CEO Claypool was here and focused mainly on finances, and I think brought in a lot of initiatives to clean that up. I would actually say, I wasn't here prior to Baker and Tilly, but they conduct a very thorough process, and they're a very reputable firm. So I would attribute the zero findings to better management and a strong finance team and controller who ensured that CPS's finances and books were clean.
And I can speak to that. So I came in 2015, and I came, Ron, I came in...
Just use your teacher voice.
We can hear you. We can hear you. Okay. So I came in 2015, and we did, we replaced controllers, and our new controller was, you know, was a CPA, worked very closely with the GFOA, was an excellent accounting, immediately came in. Part of the issue of those findings was that they were repeat findings. So the first thing that the new controller did was clean up all of those old findings, put in new, new internal controls, and that's what allowed us to get better audits. And RSM, I think, had been here for about twelve years, and that was part of the problems why we replaced them, was because you've been here twelve years and you had twenty-nine findings, fourteen findings, and nothing was happening. So we replaced the controller, replaced the auditors. First thing a new audit firm comes in and does is they look at all of the old audit findings and see if you cleaned them up. So that's the first thing that we did. We knew the issues we had to address and then put the controls in place.
Okay.
And we hired David.
Great job, David. Second question is on the refunding. I, you know, if you can definitely find better fixed terms, it's a no-brainer to go from variable to fixed terms with a higher level of certainty, right? When I first looked at it, it just sounded too good to be true. So why don't we start with that, right? Why is Dexia willing to pay a price of X in a forty million present value dollars to let go of those funds?
I think you have to look at this from a couple of different levels. They established that rate that they have with us at a point in time when our credit spreads were much tighter. Now they're much different, so if their strategy from a global standpoint is to leave the United States, then they have to take the chips where they fall. They have to sell their portfolio and market where the market wants it, and that's what we're somewhat able to take advantage of. So if they go to the marketplace, which I'm sure that they did, and they asked ten, twenty, a hundred different investors, what would you pay for a CPS variable rate bond at the rates that we have? They started to get these deep discounted figures, and then that's when they said, boy, this is really going to be quite a headache, because they have four-hundred-and-thirty-two million dollars in bonds. I don't know how many investors that they would have to line up to be able to sell that portfolio. And remember, this is only a portion of their entire portfolio. They may own billions of dollars in investments across the United States, for all I know. But they went through a major restructuring in Europe. They were, they're a French, Belgian, German bank. They were on, I'm not quite intimately familiar with them, but they have been at the precipice of bankruptcy or reorganization. So this is just another mandate for them to clean their house, get rid of these investments that were made back in a space when they thought they were basically going to do really well, because it was just right after the financial savings, right after the financial crisis, and they thought munis were going to really outperform the rest of the market, and it turns out, maybe they did, maybe they didn't, but our credit underperformed, and now they want to get out of it. So it's just a win for us. It is, as I sit here with a finance, as a finance professional with over twenty years of investment banking experience, I think this is a great opportunity for us.
Yeah. Well, that's exactly why I sent you guys a bunch of questions, because it just sounded too good to be true.
We're not going to do this transaction. It doesn't save us money. It's a plain vanilla transaction to save us money. It's away from the way we had been doing things, where we were forced into doing things because we were in a desperate situation, but this is how we should be refinancing debt. This is how you refinance your mortgage, right? You know, you don't pay anymore, you try to not extend the term, and you try to overall save money. So it's really a win for us, and we hope the rating agencies will see that as well.
Perfect. By the way, thank you for this chart on Chart Seven. Much easier for me to see the benefits and kind of the likelihood of what we're doing into going forward, so it makes it easier to understand.
Okay. Glad to follow up with you on any other questions you have.
Yes, I do. There's one more. This one, I don't know if it goes on record here or in the next one. So one thing that I did ask for was a breakdown of the historical MWBE allocation, right? So it's one, so I don't know if it's appropriate to ask here, or when you ask for it during the actual, because there is a request coming with that. So would it be appropriate, it's more for you, I don't know if to ask it here or to ask it in the next session?
You can make the request.
Of here, and then supply the other one?
I think they can, I don't think they're ready to respond to you, but...
No, they have. They have the information. They have the information, because they follow up with me already on this. So on the, over the five years, where we put that table together, did a really nice job of kind of articulate, my question was, right, what is the percentage of MWBE allocation for the underwriters for this transaction? And they did a really fabulous job of responding to it, right? So they articulated the allocation, then I asked for the five-year historical trending to ensure there was equity within MWBE allocation as well, not just at the aggregate level. And clearly, there isn't equity within the MWBE presentation, but there's some good financial reasons behind that and tables. However, I do want to ask for more data behind those assertions, because the table that I saw on the capitalization and risk just did not look right, right? So my first question would be, what are the sources of those capitalizations and risks? How valid are they? As of when were they? And then how do we make it more equitable within the MWBE allocation going forward?
Okay. So there's a lot of complexity to the nature of the questions that you have. We laid out to you, I think what's important to understand is every time we do a bond financing, we include a certain amount of MWBE participants. We have a pool of underwriters that we work with. We generally, in the senior capacity, we work with, because we're a junk-rated bond issuer with a stress, you know, level on us, we tend to work with, as a lead manager, banks that are sophisticated and able to execute in that marketplace and shield kind of the risk associated with selling those bonds and those not, those bonds not selling. That aside, then we supplement and add in a layer of MWBEs to also be able to participate to get experience in the marketplace and share in some of the rewards of the underwriting experience. So we have a historical look back. I think the average is something like thirty-nine percent of the underwriting experience has been with MWBEs. This issue, we have laid out thirty-seven percent MWBE participation as well. I think what we had been asked about was just the capital, you know, we thought it's important to lay out like, why are certain MWBEs, you know, maybe not a lead manager? And we have had some MWBEs lead manager over time, but again, when you're dealing with four-hundred, five-hundred million dollars with the junk bonds, and you're trying to make a market, you're trying to get the most aggressive pricing as you can, there's a balance there with the firms that have the expertise in this. And so we, yes, we have this picture that we've painted right now with these firms, and I feel it's very solid. There's still always work to be done in terms of the capitalization. We have, they report their capitalization to the FINRA, the financial arm of the SEC, and that's where we pulled out some of those figures. They report that to us as well. So they're smaller firms. I mean, that's what, I think that's also like the part of it that is there. They're just, they're not a, you know, certain firms are not JP Morgan, but we try to include them, so that I can follow back up with you on that. Those capitalization figures were... Yep.
Well, thank you for that response, and you will follow up, because I think more discussion is necessary.
Absolutely, especially as we finalize this one, right? Because I still have a lot of questions within the follow-up that you guys sent me. Some of those numbers just didn't look right. And then how do we, how do we actually engage in getting a more equitable distribution with MWBE? The question is not about the thirty-nine, thirty-seven, forty percent. I know you're there, right? That's very clear. What is not clear to me is a game plan to make it more equitable within MWBE. Are women getting their fair share? Are Latinos getting their fair share? Are African-Americans getting their fair share, right? It's clearly skewed, right? So what is the game plan to address and make it more equitable within?
Okay. I understand a little bit better now, yeah. I mean, some of that, we can follow up. I mean, there, I, yes, definitely, there are Hispanic firms, there are African-American firms. I'm not sure if there are any female-owned underwriters that are in our pool right now, or that there are, there used to be some in the United States, but, you know, those things kind of come and go, and a lot of firms like have been absorbed by other firms and those types of things, but we're about due for a new kind of an outreach to those firms again, to kind of pull in a pool and see who responds and then kind of shuffle the deck again.
And make sure the capitalizations are accurate from whatever external body you're getting the validation from, and what they're also telling you as well.
Oh, those are from the firms directly.
Okay.
And that outreach should be sooner rather than later.
Absolutely. And if it can be done before you execute this, I'd rather see that as well.
We got the capitalization from the city. The city uses the same information as they do their bond deals, but we recognize what your concerns are, and I would get, again, stress, over the last three years, we were a distressed issuer, so we did the best we could in just executing our bond deals and trying to get... So we did the best we could in just executing our bond deals and trying to get include minority firms and and shield them from the liability because they're, those big firms ate a lot of our bonds. So that means that if you, if you have a million-dollar capitalization and your liability is $5 million and for some reason we don't sell enough bonds, our hand, you have to buy those bonds on the spot. But we we shielded our our minority firms and and we, and I can say, every Hispanic firm that came to see us got in our our deals regardless of their capitalization. We, every African-American, just about, and maybe like one, I think, that's came to show us that we haven't gotten into a a deal yet. But we try, if you come to see us, we try to get you into our deals. And when you talk about the skewing, there's only one, you saw this one firm that skewed as far as capitalization that can take more risks than others. If you took that firm out, you would really see that it's pretty balanced between all of the firms. But I I understand your concern and we will work, we will, we will work with you to show you how that we can, that we can change that dynamic.
Can I have one clarifying question? A board member, Satello, mentioned that the numbers don't look right. I just want to go on record that you're referring to the disparity or are you saying that the numbers somehow aren't accurate? Because I think those are two different things and we want to make sure that you trust the validity of the numbers. And if that's not the case, we should clarify that.
Yes, so so let me clarify both statements. The allocation within do not feel right.
The disparity, you mean the disparity based on?
Absolutely.
That part I understand.
Absolutely. That was very clear.
Yeah.
The capitalization numbers, I saw one in particular that was hard for me to believe that it was that low.
Okay.
Really, really that low.
Okay.
Because I know that firm.
Okay.
And so when when it's that low to to compare to others.
Yeah.
It's it's, I'm asking you guys to go back and validate from the sources.
Yeah.
Right? Don't just rely on on dated data to make sure that you have updated data. I don't have a basis to know whether it's that low, if it is that low, then I completely miss, miss getting, although that person happens to be getting deals in all the major markets throughout the states, just not in the whole market.
All right. Well, we will verify that because we don't want the board to ever think we're giving you any information that's not accurate and doesn't hold up under scrutiny. So I wanted to clarify that for the record and we will follow up and make sure that we can verify those answers to the best of our ability with the information that's publicly available.
Very good. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We are up against the clock here. We're nearing 10:30. So at this time, I'd like to proceed with today's public comment segment. Madam Secretary, please share the rules for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, I would like to note that registration for the Finance and Audit Committee meeting was held between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. this morning. And I would like to note for the record that we had no registered speakers, Mr. President.
Okay. Board members, any other comments or questions? Not, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn the Finance and Audit Committee?[1779.01]